Thank you, Mr. Charles. We will now move on to item three, motion. Motion finding that the advanced posting and notice requirements of our 81200 of the code of ordinances of the city of Orange, Texas have been met in relation to all minutes impending ordinances and resolutions on this agenda, and that the reading of such items be confined to the captions as are agreed upon by the ordinances and resolutions. Do I have a motion? Do we have a motion in a second? Ms. McKenna?
Aye.
Mr. Chandler?
Aye.
Mr. Charles?
Aye.
Mr. Burge?
Aye.
Ms. Hennington?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. On to item four, citizen comments. At this time, comments will be taken from the audience on the subject matter, whether or not that item is on the agenda. Our comments will limit to a maximum of three minutes for each speaker, and your comments are appreciated. As the Texas Open Meetings Act does not allow the council to respond to items not listed on the agenda, your comments will be duly noted by the council and forwarded to the appropriate department for prompt consideration. A member of the audience that desires to speak under the city council's consideration of any specific agenda items is requested to notify city staff prior to the start of the meeting. At this time, there are no names on my sheet. Is there anyone who would like to address council? If not, we will close citizen comments. We will move to item five, city announcements. City staff announcements and city events. Mr. Adam Jack.
Good morning, Captain. Last meeting, the mayor asked me to bring a little bit of an update from what happened with the winter storm for his folks here. Recognition. Public Works worked three days during the storm. The services division was working on the buildings, contributing to the pipes, delivering fuel to our lift station operations, handling gas pumping. Streets and drainage were working on Agro Ground Bridge, which was right by the house, cleaning up debris on streets from accidents and such things. But our utilities group was the group that sanctioned the most recognition with what was going on with the heat flows. We really did not have the water line breaks or pressure issues that we saw in many of the other cities. And that was really a result of the hard work of the utilities group that it did. The photo of the mill was the only serious water line break that we had on Mill Street. The crew that worked on that is Kevis Fulmer, Brandon Lister, Zion Moore, now known as Seles Michael Pro. Jordan Freeman, who was chest deep in the water on a 20-degree day. And of course, Quincy Powell, who is the water operations supervisor and official of the Land Department, the utilities secretary was working as well. And as always, Carl Love and David Victoria, who are leads there in the utility group. So they're here over there on the side.
Y'all got to stand up first.
Yeah, I'm standing. Yeah, so I know y'all might like me. He got us coming in here. And so I'm sorry to kick y'all from work for a little while. But honestly, from the council that is here, from city staff, and on behalf of all of the citizens, I just wanted to have y'all come in and let's talk to them. We just want to say thank you. Thank you for all your hard work, your dedication. It makes it easier on us when we're not getting torn up on Facebook because water lines are buzzing everywhere. Y'all have always done a phenomenal job. We just wanted to bring you in and say thank you again. It might say y'all see some bonuses coming soon, right?
I wish.
Yeah, we do. Thank you so much, because we look forward to doing some more things to show our appreciation. So appreciate y'all. Anybody want to say something? You speak with your bro.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank y'all.
Mr. Doug, you want to say something?
No. And y'all want him to stay or he wants to go back to work?
But I'm staying. Who's yours?
I'm going to work.
Oh, there you go. Thank you again, y'all. All right, my man. Thank you, Mr. Jack, for allowing us to have the meeting today. It's one of those things where this is a family. I get a chance to work around a lot of people in my other job. And I hate when people say, "My team," or "These are my employees." No, we are a family. We are all working in this together, and we serve the community. And so I know that we have a lot of groups that go above and beyond. But when we saw the pictures of the gentleman, like you said, chest deep water at 20 degrees, I just know I couldn't have been that guy. So I just wanted to thank them boldly. All right, on to item six, consent agenda, October 1st, 2024. Planning and zoning commission meeting minutes, also January 14th, 2025, Orange Economic Development Corporation meeting minutes, and January 28th, 2025, regular city council meeting minutes. Do I have a motion? Do we have a motion in a second? Ms. Hennington?
Aye.
Mr. Burge?
Aye.
Mr. Charles?
Aye.
Mr. Chandler?
Aye.
Ms. McKenna?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. All right, here we go. I've got my water ready. Item 7A, considering ordinance of the city council of the city of Orange, Texas, amending the city of Orange code of ordinances, amending chapter three, building in construction in its entirety by adopting the International Residential Code 2021 edition with amendments, adopting the International Building Code 2021 edition with amendments, adopting the 2021 International Plumbing Code 2021 edition with amendments, adopting the International Fuel Gas Code 2021 edition with amendments, adopting the International Mechanical Code 2021 edition with amendments, adopting the National Electrical Code 2023 edition with amendments, adopting the International Swimming Pool and Spa Code 2021 edition with amendments, adopting the internationally existing building code 2021 edition with amendments, adopting the International Property Maintenance Code 2021 edition with amendments, adopting the International Energy Conservation Code 2021 edition with amendments, providing for regulation of substandard buildings, providing for a construction board of appeals, providing for street address numbering, regulating explanations in the city of Orange, providing for the regulation of manufactured homes and manufactured home parks, adopting the Texas Commission on Environmental Quality, construction standards for onsite sewage facilities, providing for flood-resistant construction, flood damage prevention, repealing chapter eight personnel and administration article 8.1500, construction appeals board in its entirety, providing a severability clause, repealing all ordinances in conflict with this ordinance, providing a penalty clause, providing an effective date, and other matters. Mr. Benoit.
Good morning, Mayor Spears, members of council, citizens of Orange. Today's presentation is a proposal to update our building code, something that we, the staff, have been working on for a while. And we're hoping that we can get some positive consideration for this request. Following this presentation, we're going to ask that you vote formally to adopt the 2021 International Building Codes, the fire code, and the 2023 National Electric Code.
Yeah, I got you.
Oh, okay. These are the international codes. It's kind of a circle effect. The international codes are updated every three years, but each version must be formally adopted by the municipality. Right now, the state of Texas is kind of melting pot of several different codes, several different years. Some of the codes are actually done by the state themselves. Some are done by the Texas Department of Licensing and Regulation. Some is done by the Texas Plumbing Board. But these are the state minimum codes. We, as a municipality, would always try to adopt newer and more stringent codes. This is a look at the Golden Triangle area. Again, every municipality decides upon themselves what year that they were going to adopt. Everyone agrees that they're going to use the International Building Code. It's just that everyone is on a different year cycle. And at this time, we're looking at going from 2003, we want to jump up to 2021. These are the initial recommendations. We actually have nine international building codes we're going to ask to be adopted. And also, we want to update chapter three of the city of Orange code ordinances. One of the things we also want to implement back into the system is a construction board of appeals. That board would actually sit anytime there's a complaint of the decisions that we make, or some of the decisions we make in the field. That would be a board of civilians that would listen to it to see whether or not we're doing our proper job interpreting what the code has to say. The first code that we want to consider is the International Residential Code. This is important because it's a standalone code. This code covers everything for one- and two-family dwellings and townhouses less than three stories high. So in this one book, it covers the electrical, the plumbing, and the mechanical, and the building in construction. So this one book is everything to do with the residential code. Some of the things new in this cycle has to do with tiny homes are actually included, and they give guidance as far as what should be a tiny home. 3D printed homes, which they're saying now that that would be the future of the TLO because they can go up a lot quicker. Delphine construction, one-foot freeboard, that's going to help us with our flood-resistant construction, and the list goes on. This picture here is just kind of an idea of all the different areas in a residential home that require permits. Next, we recommend the adoption of the 2021 International Building Code. This code is actually the building code for everything, all construction other than one- and two-family dwellings, the townhouses three stories or less. So this is a very intense book. This is a very intense, a lot of information. I like this cycle has to do with vehicle charging stations, solar battery charging, detail for health care facilities. You know, a health care facility, in some instances, the people are ambulatory, and in some instances, they're not. And so there's more fire restrictions when it comes to non-ambulatory people because it takes two to get one person out. And so there's more fire restrictions, sprinklers, firewalls, fire barriers, on those type of events. Again, they talk about container structures, which is something that people have asked about. We've not been able to give them much guidance because it wasn't in our code. Again, one-foot freeboard, and this also covers things like the stateroom, public rooms, things that are kind of new. International Existing Building Code, this is important for older houses. Depending on the circumstances, this allows someone working on an older home not to have to bring it up to completely current codes. And depending on what level of construction they're going to do, that allows them certain exemptions for bringing it fully up to code. This right here is the International Plumbing Code. And this code here is a breakout code. And so this code works in conjunction with other codes. It works with the building code. It works with the gas code. And it brings out new types of products and new ways to do plumbing. International Fuel Gas Code, again, another breakout code, just like the other codes that references back to the plumbing code, back to the residential code. And this is important that we have a gas code because as these homes become a lot tighter, it's important that on fuel burning appliances that we have enough air that they can actually burn clean, and we have the proper ventilation. Next is mechanical. This has to do with any type of repair, operation, or new installation of heat, ventilation, and air conditioning systems. This is the International Electric, I mean Energy Conservation Code. This code actually has to do a lot with trying to save people money in the operation of the house. It's going to cost more to build the house, but with these type of energy-efficient implements in the house, the cost of living in the house should be less over the course of the family that's going to live in that structure. This year, we would utilize third-party inspectors that would come in, and all they do is just inspect the insulation and the ventilation and the draft and the tightness of the home. This here is the 2023 National Electric Code. We're actually looking at jumping up to a higher code instead of going backward to the 2020. Again, this is done on a three-year cycle. And some of the reason we want to go ahead and try to be a little bit more current. This code is not made by the International Code Council. This is actually done by the National Fire Protection Agency. Currently, in 2003, the electric code was still under the International Code Council. Now, they've gone to the National Fire Protection Association. But this code is actually referenced in all the other building codes, so this now has become the standard for the electric code. The International Property Maintenance Code, this is very valuable when we go out and we look at these substandard structures. So this actually gives us an idea of what that structure has to be maintained in order to have a human occupant inside it. Another thing that's going to be new is it actually specifies in a rental situation, what responsibilities belong to the owner and what responsibilities belong to the tenant. Most of our time on a daily basis is taken up by tenant complaints because their owner is not fixing the house. They're not doing things. This code right here specifies exactly what their owner's responsible for in order to have a tenant, and what the tenant's responsible for living in that owner's house. International Swimming Pool and Spa Code, this is a new code. It didn't exist the last code cycle, but this definitely specifies everything that needs to go on with building the swimming pools, maintenance of swimming pools and spas. The big thing about this one is now it actually has restrictions and guidance for the construction. And so before, you know, there's restrictions on the pool. So people had to have a fence to protect the neighbors and everything else. Now they've actually gone in, and there's protection now during construction. So during construction, if there's a hole in the ground, they have to have it fenced in. It has to be secured. And so there's a lot more regulations as far as building swimming pools. International Fire Code, this fire code overlaps a lot with the building code. Myself and the fire marshal have worked a lot trying to get this to be in sync. One of the big things that's a big issue this time around is the solar battery storage. It seems that these batteries, these solar batteries, if they catch fire, it's hard to put them out. And so now, in a home that's going to have battery storage, the majority of the solar panels that have been installed in Orange don't have batteries. So they only work when the sun is shining and the electricity from Entergy is supplying power to the house. When it comes to these battery storage facilities, we have to create a fire barrier around that facility that's going to hold the batteries, protect it from the rest of the house. On this one here, the fire marshal will defer the updating of amendments to section 50101 to the city ordinance at a later date. Again, the purpose of these codes are just minimal requirements to provide a reasonable level of safety. Each model code is refined every three years, but it's up to the state and local jurisdiction to adopt those codes. This is kind of the procedures, or I guess the timeline we've gone through. We kind of started with the introduction last year. We've had three town halls there at our building inviting the contractors in to let them know what's coming up. For us, it's not a big to-do because many of the surrounding municipalities have already gone to the 2021 code. The actual 2024 code is out, so there's a newer code. So there's no more changes on the 2021 code. So it's set and stung. And so we did invite all the contractors to come in and voice their concerns, and we considered that as we came up with our final draft of this resolution. It's up to your questions. This concludes my presentation.
I don't know.
Yes, sir.
You just said that there's a new 2024 code out.
Yes.
So why would we not adopt the new 2024 code?
We're a small city.
Okay.
We don't have a lot of staff. So it's better for the bigger cities like Beaumont or Houston for them to adopt the codes. They go through all the troubleshooting, what's good, what's not. You know, some of the things they had, like in the 2020 electrical code, they wanted to put surge protectors on a dryer, on a 220 volt. Before, it was only on 120. They wanted to go on a 220 volt. Well, the dryer was kicking the breakers and everything. So in the 2023, they got that fixed. But it's, from my perspective, it's better to let the bigger cities work that out. Yeah, work all that out. And then we can come behind them after the kinks are worked out, and it's easier to do.
Okay, thank you, Frank.
And if we can, let me take you just for a moment. Jake, if we could go to the internet and go to ICC Safe. The good thing now is these codes are online, so they're available to everyone. So if you go to this website, ICC Safe, and you go up to the little mini tab, and you go up to digital codes, and then you'll have to pick the icon tab, and you go to 2021. And so these are the codes. These are all the code books that we just reviewed. So Jake, if we could go to the International Residential Code. And so let's take us to chapter one, please, sir. So over to the right, that is the code. So there's no reason that anyone shouldn't know the code. You know, before, you know, out to a job site and say, "Well, where's your codebook?" These guys are working. They have no codebook. They have no idea what we're talking about. Now, there's no reason that anyone shouldn't have the code because it's free. It's on the internet. And so...
And I just want to say thank you because the intricacy and the detail, the things that you put into this, and then all the meetings and getting it set up where people had time to come and voice their concerns, that's how you handle business. So thank you for that because I know that I'm sure whenever you show up, everybody's like, "Uh-oh, you know, kind of here we go. He's going to kick us off this job." But like you said, and I said it earlier in the EDC meeting, one of the things, I mean, the Bible says, "My people perish for a lack of knowledge." This is knowledge. This is power. When it's right there in front of you, there's not no reason you can't access it. You're showing it to us today. So the one question I'm going to have, though, is so let's say someone's currently building something, and then we put this into play. Is that grandfathered, or like, is there a day that you cut it off and say, "Now, we will do this"?
We're looking at March 1st to be the changeover date. So anyone that has a permit before March 1st, they'll still be under the old code. So throughout the whole completion of their project, it'd be on the old code. If they come in and get a permit after March 1st, then we put the new code on.
Thank you so much.
Okay, question. The board that you're mentioning, is it going to be comprised of professionals that understand what we're going through?
Yes, sir. And one of the things we looked at is we have to expand our scope because before, the boards were restricted to the city. They had to be a resident of the city. Now, we've expanded that to Orange County and surrounding counties. Sometimes it's hard to make sure that we have an engineer, a mechanical, electrical, plumbing type of engineer. We have to have an architect, one that's versed in commercial buildings and residential buildings. We have to have an electrician. We have to have a plumber. And so this board is comprised of both trade people and professional people to give citizens opportunity to voice their concern and decide whether or not we're interpreting the code correctly. They can't change the code, but it's just a matter of interpretation.
Thank you for the time. That was the issue that was...
This is awesome. Thank you. Any other comments or questions from Mr. Benoit? Okay, thank you, Mr. Benoit. And so that one was requested, considering the ordinance. So do, we can go ahead and push this. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Do we have a motion in a second? Ms. McKenna?
Aye.
Mr. Chandler?
Aye.
Mr. Charles?
Aye.
Mr. Burge?
Aye.
Ms. Hennington?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. Thank you again, Mr. Benoit, and to all the staff involved. Item A, consider a resolution approving an EDC infrastructure grant agreement with Red Gator Rentals at 3400 Agro Ground Drive, Orange, Texas, 77630, and about 120,000 dollars. Mr. Burge?
Can I try to do it another way?
Assistant EDC Director, hopefully, I can get it forward. So maybe it's in the presentation. Estimated positive $75,000 of capital investment in infrastructure improvements will support $110,000 of the city in terms of moving the project forward. So if you're approval, we'll handle the first reading today and come back in two weeks and complete the final reading.
Any questions or comments from Mr. Trainian? Do I have a motion?
Motion.
We have a motion in a second. Ms. Hennington?
Aye.
Mr. Burge?
Aye.
Mr. Charles?
Aye.
Mr. Chandler?
Aye.
Ms. McKenna?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. And also, thank you to the EDC staff for working with people in the community and from outside our community to bring in new business. Definitely appreciated. Item A to be considered resolution of the city council of the city of Orange, Texas, supporting the proposed villages at Orange Housing Community for Families, TVHCA, application 25082, providing an in-kind contribution for such project, providing an effective date. Mr. Benoit.
Yes, this is another application for test, that's part of the Texas Housing Community Affairs. These are not such elite housing. These are not low-income, you know, pad housing. These are ones where people, if they have an income that's below the median income, then they possibly get a subsidy. Including professional people like schoolteachers, police officers, firefighters, people like that. So anyway, we have Jeremy Myers, who is the applicant to TVHCA, and he's got a presentation.
Hello, I'm Jeremy Myers Brownstone. Yeah, we're, you know, as part of our application, TVHCA, we have to get a resolution for and in-kind contribution. So just real quick about Brownstone. We've been around since 1971. We've got probably, we've probably developed about 20,000 units of apartments. And currently, we've got about 6,000 units under construction. So we're pretty well-developed in Texas. Real quick on the slides, let me show you this. Here's a site plan that we have. And so on this site plan, let's see, we're planning to have a dog park. We'll probably have a nice clubhouse with a playground. And we're trying to do some tree boppers as well, please. This gives some of the unit matrix, some of the units we're applying to square footage and the total, some of the total square footage is what we have at the leasing center as well. So it'll be a mix of one, two, and three different units. These are the income levels. Like Kelvin mentioned, we're going to have some lower-income units and also have some market rate units as well. So it'll be a mix of all that. But I think it's going to serve families in the lower-income community that's, that at least have some market rate units. This will be the quality of what we're looking at. These are some other affordable deals that we've done in Texas. And these will be, kind of give you some of an idea of the nature we'll have. Here's some deals we've done in Texas, affordable projects. And you can see where we develop mostly in the south. So we're a large company. We manage our own property. We'll own the property. We have in-house architecture, in-house legal. We pretty much handle everything. So we've got deals in Beaumont currently, closest one, and also up in Livingston. So these are the parts that are kind of initial for those. So, but yeah, this request, we have support resolution with any kind of contribution that lets us keep moving forward towards the city of Seattle, so.
Thank you for coming before us today. So how many appointments, or would that be at this time?
We're roughly 84, that'd be max, and maybe 78, but I'm allowed to step up to 84.
And will there be like an age limitation on this one?
No, this is supposed to be open to all families.
Okay. So in the end, for those who might have seen the map, it will be located to the south of Salvation Army on MLK,
which is already some housing buildings in that area.
So this will double as we green space and bring more people into the community. And I also saw that it was a $19 million investment project.
Yeah, we'll do our best to hire local. We'll staff it with assistant managers, managers, maintenance men, all that, and we'll be vetted out to local contractors as well, have an opportunity.
And I have one more before I turn it over. So one more thing, whatever says, I know we have, it's for the resolution to be awarded, but when it says providing an in-kind contribution, could you, I just want to make sure we all understand all of that, too.
Thank you for the, yeah, thank you for the cash contribution to the cost of the budget. There couldn't be a reduced building fees or waiver of building fees. Just whatever the city chooses to come up with at $500. But that's a TVHCA department.
Oh, that is the $500 on my report?
Yeah.
Okay. I just didn't go exactly with the amount would be.
Yeah.
Okay.
$500.
All right, any questions or comments? Do we have a motion to, uh, consider a resolution?
Motion.
Second.
Do we have a motion in a second, Ms. McKenna?
Aye.
Mr. Chandler?
Aye.
Mr. Charles?
Aye.
Mr. Burge?
Aye.
Ms. Henigan?
Aye.
A motion passes, thank you, Senator. Okay, on to item A, C. Consider a Resolution Authorizing the City Manager's Execute Change Order Number One with Texas Materials Group Incorporated for an Overrun on Asphalt on Twenty-seventh Street. Ms. Blou?
Good morning, Mayor, your counsel. Um, this change order is for the twenty-seventh Q A North Village location project. Uh, they overran on asphalt, there was a discrepancy in the plans. Um, where twenty-seven turns into park lanes, didn't want a pavement change, rightly hold that curb. So we decided it would be best to extend that surface a little bit further and try, you know, residents can completely curb safely. Um, this, this, uh, change order is in the amount of six thousand, six hundred and eighteen dollars and thirty cents, and the city staff recommends.
Any questions? Do we have a motion in a second, Ms. McKenna?
Aye.
Mr. Chandler?
Aye.
Mr. Charles?
Aye.
Mr. Burge?
Aye.
Ms. Henigan?
Aye.
So does this have to come from like a contingency fund, or is it already just part of our allotment for that?
It will be part of the allotment.
All right, thank you so much. Okay, item A, D, Consider a Resolution Awarding a Contract to Mustang Machinery Company, LLC, at the amount of twenty-three thousand, six ninety-five, forty-nine cents for RFP twenty-twenty-five dash O three, generator maintenance services for the City of Orange. Mr. Jack?
Yes. Um, this contract is our annual generator maintenance contract. There's preventive maintenance on our generators throughout the city, as well as the pairs. Uh, we received four proposals for, uh, services. Lois' bid was twenty-three thousand, six hundred and ninety-five dollars and forty-nine cents. Um, left standing machinery, the company of, 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 and staff recommends approval.
Any questions or comments for Mr. Jack? Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Have a motion in a second, Ms. Henigan?
Aye.
Mr. Burge?
Aye.
Mr. Charles?
Aye.
Mr. Chandler?
Aye.
Ms. McKenna?
Aye.
All right, motion passes. And will this one have to be renewed on a yearly basis?
It is renewed on a yearly basis.
We've been working on service level agreements and other jobs, we've been talking about all that. All right, thank you. Item A, D, Consider a Resolution Awarding a Contract to Simply Aquatics in an amount of two hundred and forty-three thousand for the bid twenty-twenty-five dash twelve, water well treatment chemicals. Mr. Jack?
Yes, again, another annual contract that we use, this particular one for water quality chemicals that we use in three, uh, well sites that we have throughout the city. Uh, we only received one proposal from our current vendor, Simply Aquatics out of Curville. And, uh, again, the amount being two hundred and forty-three thousand dollars, staff recommends approval.
Any questions or comments? If not, do we have a motion?
Motion.
Do we have a motion in a second, Ms. McKenna?
Aye.
Mr. Chandler?
Aye.
Mr. Charles?
Aye.
Mr. Burge?
Aye.
Ms. Henigan?
Aye.
A motion passes, thank you, Mr. Jack. Item A, F, Consider a Resolution Authorizing an Approving Amendment Number One to Contract with Tank Trailer and Associates Regarding Grand Administration Services for the Texas General Land Office, G L O, Major Development Block Grant Disaster Recovery Local Buyout slash Acquisition Program, Contract Number Twenty dash zero six six dash zero three nine dash C two five A. Ms. Zito?
Good morning. So this was the, uh, buyout and acquisition grant, and it's coming to an end. We had three homes that applied for qualified and were purchased from the homeowners. Uh, these homes have been or might be in the process of being demolished, and then the city won the green space thereafter. Uh, the grant administrator is Trevor Sashis. This motion is to allow the contract amount with the, uh, the contract amount with Trailer, with the contract amount with the G L O, because for Trailer, we hired Trailer, we had a different grant admin, and we had paid them some money. So Trailer, uh, had to reduce their fees. So this is to reduce their fees to make sure that we don't go over that limit with the G L O.
Thank you for working on this. I know that this was, this has like been going on for a long time. Uh, for those who don't know, like, once we have to do, once we do an acquisition and buyout, through this program and the state of Texas, we're then responsible for that property, and we can't build under for a hundred years. Is it a hundred years?
Ninety-nine, yeah.
Ninety-nine, but I am going to be here. Okay, all right, thank you. Ms. Zito, any questions or comments? If not, do we have a motion?
Motion.
Do we have a motion in a second, Ms. Henigan?
Aye.
Mr. Burge?
Aye.
Mr. Charles?
Uh.
Mr. Chandler?
Uh.
Ms. McKenna?
Aye.
All right, motion passes. This also helps us remove high stores and elevated buildings from our community.
These homes have been ready for the approval.
Yes, we have. All right, item A, G. Consider a Resolution to Meaning the Consultant Services Agreement with Avenue Insights and Analytics, LLC, for Hotel Occupancy Tax Collection Compliance and Audit Services. Ms. Zito?
So Avenue Insights, uh, has been our consultant for several years. They collect our hotel occupancy taxes, they, uh, assist hotel owners filing those taxes, they review the submissions. Uh, they also provide, uh, city audit services for two on, two hotels per year to make sure that they're based on the up and down. Uh, this resolution is to extend the contract for additional four years. There is a modest, uh, price increase. Uh, this, I look back and I, there has not been a price increase in many years, auditions I've been here. So it's been time, and they've agreed to step the increase up over the four-year period and not just hit this all at once. So, uh, we're very, staff is very pleased with their services, and they recommend this extension.
And they also did a good job of helping us find money that was not being properly, yeah, we've had several issues with.
The audits, they'll find, they, not always, but they can have.
I won't say any names right now, but things like Kobe Parker can go down in time after yourself, all right? Any questions or comments? Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Do we have a motion in a second, Ms. McKenna?
Aye.
Ms., Mr. Chandler?
Aye.
Mr. Charles?
Aye.
Mr. Burge?
Aye.
Ms. Henigan?
Aye.
A motion passes. I did not mean to go in, but it's Chandler. All right, A, H. Consider a Resolution to Meaning the Consulting, Consulting Services Agreement with Avenue Insights and Analytics, LLC, for Sales Tax Compliance Review Services. Ms. Zito?
So this same company also provides the city with consulting services for sales tax. They, they monitor the, they control the reports, uh, they review our, the, the liquid accounts with sales tax, and they provide collection actions for that. Uh, the minimum fee, uh, is annually a little over four thousand dollars, and this includes, uh, the sides, services that provide. They also provide us with a website that we can go and include some, some data. We don't get all the data from the, uh, contractor's office because we, they don't provide that to us directly, they will provide it to our consultant. They, they put it into a graph form, and we get to see some of the sales tax numbers and, uh, or, or percentages. Uh, we've used this company also for this same, for this service for many years, and we're pleased with their services, and we recommend, uh, this is a legitimate extension.
Any questions or comments? If not, do we have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Do we have a motion in a second, Ms. McKenna?
Aye.
Mr. Chandler?
Aye.
Mr. Charles?
Aye.
Mr. Burge?
Aye.
Ms. Henigan? A motion passes. Thank you, Ms. Zito, I know you don't need to be around. Now, A, Consider a Motion Acknowledging Receipt of the City's Quarterly Investment Report for the Period Ending December thirty-first, twenty twenty-four. Ms. Zito? All right, Ms. Blou, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, I. A, Consider a Resolution Awarding a Contract to McGriff Insurance Services for Employee Insurance Consulting Services. Ms. Zito?
So, um, we did, uh, our contract expired with McGriff, so we did all RFP. We advertised it, we sent out, uh, bid packets to many firms. We only got two proposals. Uh, I committed to review both proposals, and McGriff did score the highest. They have been our consultant for many years, very pleased they have saved us a lot of money in years past, and, uh, we recommend awarding to McGriff.
Okay. All right, do I have a motion?
Motion.
We have a motion from Mr. Chandler, a second by Mr. Burge. Ms. Henigan?
Aye.
Mr. Burge?
Aye.
Mr. Charles?
Aye.
Mr. Chandler?
Aye.
Ms. McKenna?
Aye.
A motion passes. Item nine, A, point two. Consider a Motion Acknowledging Receipt of the City's Quarterly Investment Report for the Period Ending December thirty-first, twenty twenty-four. Ms. Zito?
So this is the city's, uh, first quarter of fiscal year twenty-five, quarterly report. Um, quarterly report, uh, business report just gives us our cash position. Our total cash investments is thirty-three million, seven hundred thousand. Uh, our average rate return right now is four point eight, which is still good. It is a little less than last quarter, but, because rates are going down, but it's still hanging in there. Other than the majority of our investments is, well, we have our CD at First Pride Bank Bank, and we use the, uh, governmental money market account at Los Fargo to maximize our earnings right now. We still believe that that's our best choice. Uh, let's see. Oh, and our benchmark, we always try to compare our earnings to the benchmark. Uh, the benchmark is an average six-month T-bills, and the average right now of the T-bills for this quarter was four point two-six. And I just said, our, our, our average is four point one-eight, so we're pretty close to our benchmark, and pretty much. Uh, our reporting is compliant with our investment policy, and if I have any questions, if you have any.
Anybody have any? Now, do I have a motion?
Motion.
Second. Do we have a motion in a second, Ms. Henigan?
Aye.
Mr. Burge?
Aye.
Mr. Charles?
Aye.
Mr. Chandler?
Aye.
Ms. McKenna?
Aye.
A motion passes. Item nine, B. Consider a Motion Acknowledging Receipt of the Orange Economic Development Corporation Financial Report for the Quarter Ending December thirty-first, twenty twenty-four. Ms. Zito?
So earlier at the, uh, EDC Board meeting, I presented the financial report. Um, in a nutshell, uh, the, the EDC is doing just great, and they have unsigned available resources for new projects, uh, about one point nine million at the December thirty-first.
Any questions or comments?
Do I have a motion?
Second.
Do we have a motion in a second, Ms. McKenna?
Aye.
Mr. Chandler?
Aye.
Mr. Charles?
Aye.
Mr. Burge?
Aye.
Ms. Henigan?
Aye.
A motion passes. Item nine, C. Consider a Motion Acknowledging Receipt of the Orange Economic Development Corporation Investment Report for the Quarter Ending December thirty-first, twenty twenty-four. Ms. Zito?
So this is the EDC's, uh, investment report, which shows their cash position, and at the end of December, they had five point four billion. Uh, the same CD at First Pride Bank, two hundred and fifty thousand, and, uh, the majority of the EDC's money, uh, five, about five billion, is in their government-backed money market account at Los Fargo.
All right, thank you, Ms. Zito. Any questions or comments? If not, do we have a motion?
Motion.
Do we have a motion in a second, Ms. Henigan?
Aye.
Mr. Burge?
Aye.
Mr. Charles?
Aye.
Mr. Chandler?
Aye.
Ms. McKenna?
Aye.
A motion passes. Okay, on to item nine, D. Consider a Motion Acknowledging Receipt of the Revised City of Orange Economic Development Bylaws As Amended in January twenty twenty-five, and Expressing the Intent to Review and Consider the Proposed Resolutions for Approval and Implementation. Mr. Trainian?
Yes, so Mayor and Counsel, first of all, I want to acknowledge Assistant EDC Director Hillary Grab, who was not with us this morning, but she has spent many hours in terms of completely reform adding the newest version of these EDC bylaws. So I did want to commend her for the public record. Uh, secondly, I want to share that EDC staff, along with the city manager, uh, began the review process, I think over early December. So, uh, we worked on it for a period of time to present it at the EDC board meeting this morning, uh, with the intent of a motion of acknowledgement of C, because it is a process in terms of the review and, and asking for comment. So as a result of the presentation this morning, uh, we did have one comment from EDC Board Vice President, Mr. George Mortimer, in terms of adding, uh, to section two point zero eight, paragraph B, a qualifier in terms of, uh, a potential conflict of interest, of, uh, either EDC board member or council member who may have a five percent or greater share, uh, shareholder, uh, ownership of a publicly traded company. So, uh, we referred it to City Attorney Guy Goodson for review, and that was the only comment that was made this morning. So what we'll do is, uh, allow Mr. Counsel to share any comments, if you, if you have any. But we still will allow an additional two weeks for additional review. It'll be another agenda item in two weeks at the, uh, next council meeting, and we'll work toward forming the approval and adopting the revised version of the EDC bylaws. So Mayor, I'll turn it back over to you with, with that intention, and then we can have the discussion, and we're open to any comments.
Okay, any comments from council? I do want to, uh, recognize Mr. Mortimer, and thank him for his suggestion in adding that. Uh, over the years, I've been able to serve for almost ten years, I think, in, in EDC. And our biggest thing is, the biggest component is to make sure that we're transparent and honest in all that we do. Uh, as we are vetted for these boards and having to say what we have, uh, if we may have alliances, or we are part of a business or a company, this is going to help us make sure that there's not anything that could be a type of loophole, to make sure that we're covering ourselves. Before, we've always been, gone through the list, you had to sign that you were following the rules, and then, of course, we were always expected to recuse ourselves from any type of, uh, decision-making that would involve us, whether, like, I worked for Dow, then I would recuse myself. Having this extra step is just going to make sure that, once again, the public knows that we're transparent, we're honest, and that everything is public record. So thank you, Mr. Mortimer, for that, I appreciate it. With that being said, if we don't have one, do we have a motion?
Motion.
We have a motion from Ms. Henigan, a second, from Mr. Charles, Ms. McKenna?
Aye.
Mr. Chandler?
Aye.
Mr. Charles?
Uh.
Mr. Burge?
Aye.
And Ms. Henigan?
Aye.
A motion passes. Thank you, Mr. Trainian. All right, I, item ten, A, City Manager Report, Mr. Coons?
Good morning, Mayor, Council, uh, students, Friday, the February fourteenth. It's this Friday, the last day of, uh, for the municipal election. I just caution anybody who hasn't, but the plan is to turn it in probably, don't go to the last minute, because if there's a mistake, or you omit something, you don't have an extension, you have five minutes, and I take it right there in.
Yes.
It's, it's, it's then on five o'clock. And then, uh, if you haven't already, we have the, uh, Trish and them, we, uh, we would like to have a special call meeting next Tuesday, February eighteenth, at five thirty, here in the chamber. Kind of talk about the revenue for fiscal year twenty-five, but also kind of kick off that discussion for fiscal year twenty twenty-six, and that might be part of the budget.
Thank you for that, thank you for letting, uh, letting us make sure we're working and starting on that early. This, this past year, we were dealing with things, uh, that we weren't used to, and seeing, uh, a shortage in our monthly sales tax revenue. So I think we've taken some awesome measures, and now that's what we can do for twenty twenty-six. All right, with that being said, City Council Report, Ms. McKenna?
Happy Valentine's Day. Happy Mardi Gras.
Happy.
Um, uh, like history, huh? Thanks, everyone, for leaving.
Thank you, Ms. McKenna.
No problem.
Yes, I just want to offer a, a general reminder about, um, the proposed ordinance a few weeks ago about the trap maneuver, at least. I don't want them to get too far behind, because they did mention about its mating season, and, uh, we need to remember that.
Uh, we have a pothole on our new two-lane road.
All right, thank you. I do want to thank, um, so, uh, I want to thank Mr. Charles, who brought up a very good point over here, um, and I thank you for going above and beyond. So whenever you were talking about leaving with Mr. Benoit, a lot of times, those who are watching this on YouTube, um, or on the City of Orange page, on, with our new logo and everything, people see it, and they, they see us go through the agenda, and they, we're like, motion, motion, motion. When we receive our looks ahead of time, that's what gives us time to go and work with staff with the questions that we have. So, uh, please don't think that we're just, like, reading it and, like, going with the flow. We have time, we call, we get to review it, and we get to make sure that we agree with what's going on before we just come in here and move forward. I also want to reiterate, and I know this is twenty twenty-five, we're just getting started, we've been doing this for a while. Uh, but I had someone ask me, they said, why do you go back and forth the way you do? Well, we had some complaints a couple of years ago that one side always got to go first, or like, what if I have an idea and then someone beats me to the punch? Now, the first time is Mary, and the next, first time, next time is, is, uh, Mr. Chandler. So by, by going back and forth, I want to make sure that we're always allowing somebody a chance to say something, or to be heard first, or a motion, or a second. And that way, we're all continuing to work together and dispel any rumors, because we are a team, we're one family, and we're, we're doing the best that we can, so. With that being said, um, can I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
All right, thank you all for coming. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Meeting is adjourned.